Good evening and welcome to the February 25th, 2020 of City Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission is meeting via video conference to adhere to Governor Newsom's stay-at-home order pursuant to three of executive order in dash 2020 executed by the Governor of California on March 17th, 2020. And as a reason mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, commission will allow members of the public to participate and address planning commission during the open session of the meeting. Public may be submitted by telephone during the meeting and prior to close of on any agenda item by calling 916-774-5353. If you call, you may be placed on hold until answer. The broadcast is delayed by up to 30 seconds. Watching at home, when you call, when your call is transferred, you will have three minutes for comment on items not on the agenda and five minutes in which regular item. Your time will be monitored and you will be informed when you have left to conclude your comments. If meeting will come, and please turn down the volume on the meeting in order to avoid interruption. When calling, please do not use your speakerphone option as it may create for the planning commission to hear your comments. I will now call the meeting to order. Lute, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Caparoso?
Here.
Commissioner Craftka?
Here.
Commissioner La Brea?
Here.
Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Mark, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pryor? Vice Chair Jensen?
Here.
And Chair Bashirz?
Here.
Now, please me and the Pledge of Allegiance. I have the of the United States of Public, for which it stands. One nation, God indivisible, with liberty. Now staff introduction now, please.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner Nelson, Training Secretary.
Good evening, Commissioners, Shell, Shell, City Attorney.
Good evening, Chair Bashirz and Commissioners, Greg, planning manager.
Bashirz and Commissioners, Derek Ogden, Senior Planner.
Now is time for public comments. Public comment time for anyone who would like to address the commission on any not on tonight's agenda. Public comment may be given by 916-774-5353. When addressing the commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to Greg, is there anyone from the public who would like to address any on tonight's agenda?
Chair Bashirz, we do have somebody on hold to address the so I'm going to ask for that to be transferred to my phone right now.
Okay.
Hello there, you're on, you may address the planning commission. Mr. Bryant?
Greg, do we have?
Eric, I think Greg was having a little bit of difficulty. The speaker part of the phone on, so minute, I think we do have one public comment.
Pardon me, Chair, we have Nick Bryant on the phone to address. Ahead, Ms.
Um, I plan, let's make it a plan for a bus shelter at Wood Creek please for the Route D. We don't or sit down in the shelter and that needs to be planned. And also, and and there's a matter of bus stop two that's on Wood Creek and Route D that needs to but that needs to bus shelter too as well. And also, can you go up for Route D, can we put a bench there? That would be great. Also, there is a bus shelter at Walgreens on Hills and Main at Walgreens that don't use. And we would like to we would like that one. And it's not being used, but used. And I also would like to plan on not having planned on having extra police the bus stop on Wood on because we're seeing an increase of homeless. This homeless putting our bus shelter and I've and this is dealing with a problem. All they do is and we just want extra security and extra police presence. It's a problem.
Oh, okay. What? Oh, yes, yes.
Last part didn't really hear, where was he talking about the extras?
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Bryant, where were you talking about the extra police presence? The shelter Walgreens?
No, at the Civic Center.
At the Civic Center. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Okay, we've made note of of the public comment. Any any others members from the time?
I don't believe we have any, there's nobody else on Chair Bashirz. So I believe that that's it for for items not on the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Bryant, and hearing no others, I will now close the public comment period. Now, next on the agenda is the consent and calendar consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered on a request, audience, the planning commission or staff. To request that an item be considered, the public may call 916-774-553. Tonight's consent calendar consists 5.1, the minutes from the February 11th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. And item 5.2, infill parcel 191 by slony mention located at 105 Ascot Drive for the record file number P20-0270. Anyone at this time from the public who would like to pull an item from the for discussion?
We'll just give it 30 seconds here, but nobody's right now. Chair, the public will pull an item from the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Would any of my fellow commissioners like to pull an item from the consent calendar tonight? Hearing none, may I have the consent as listed?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner says motion, I believe, and Commissioner Martin has seconded motion. Okay, may I please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Caparoso?
Yes.
Commissioner Craftka? Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Chair Jensen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Pryor? Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
And Chair Bashirz?
Yes. The motion is approved, and there is a 10-day appeal period for item 5.2. Next is requests and presentations. Before we begin, I review the meeting procedures. First, we will hear the chair's presentation. Then I will take questions from the commission. Public here. The applicant will make a presentation. I will then public comment and the public will have an opportunity to speak. I will then close public comments. The applicant will be given an opportunity to provide and then I will close the public hearing. The commission may ask questions of staff and then finally consider to make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and testimony presented during tonight's hearing. The comment may be given by calling 916-774-533. If you call, you may be placed on hold until staff can answer. By pressing the commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments. First on the agenda, item 6.1 is a request to adopt the baseline storage initial study negative declaration proof of use permit and design review permit. 570 Baseline Road for the record file number PL 1-0350. Charity, may we clear presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bashirz, Commissioner.
Can you, Charity? Anybody?
I can't hear her.
Mm-mm.
She froze.
Isn't on my screen as well.
I can't see her, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I I apologize. Internet connection issues, can you?
Yes.
We lost you again.
Charity, if you can hear us, I would just leave your camera off and go through the presentation with just audio.
Is it possible, Greg, that Charity could call?
Um, I, I think
I've turned the camera off. Do you hear?
Yes, we can hear you pretty well now.
Okay. And I apologize. Having issues, do I don't see the presentation? Yet, is it up?
Yes.
It's now.
Okay, hopefully everyone can hear. All right, thank you, everyone, thanks for the patience. I'm Charity Gold, Associate Planner. To present the baseline storage project. The project is located at 750 Baseline Road on Sierra Vista Pacific Parcel KT 43B. The project is located within a developing portion of the Sierra Vista specific plan area. The site is designated for commercial uses by residential projects to the north and northeast to the southeast and general commercial to the west. Southern three is adjacent to Baseline Road. The applicant approval of a conditional use permit and design review permit to construct a facility that will include an office and manager's project will be constructed two phases. The first phase will construct the eastern half of the this phase will include the project entrance, office, manager's residence, storage buildings and outdoor RV storage. Second phase will complete the storage facility and replace the RV storage with storage buildings. Ultimately, the site 164 square foot office, a 452 square foot manager's residence and 226 square feet of storage buildings. Access to the dated and access hours will be limited consistent with zoning ordinance required. The entrance to the site will be located Baseline Road adjacent to the office to manager unit. The baseline road is currently constructed as a four-lane road with a central turd lane ultimately planned as a six-lane arterial. Project's entrance will be designed to ensure the safety of vehicles entering sitting the site. As detailed in the memo that was commissioned prior to the hearing. Condition 20 been revised or modified to remove the traffic signal requirement at the project's driveway and instead require a median access to right turn ingress and egress and left turn ingress. The project will construct its frontage on Baseline Road sent with the planned expansion of this road between the of an auxiliary lane, curb, gutter, sidewalk and a 50-foot escape buffer. At build out, the site will be changed from view by the walls of the storage buildings. The walls will consist of wall all separated by pilasters. Iron fence used at the emergency exit, at the entrance to the site and along the project boundary in Lee, the southern elevation will include more than 900 feet front edge on baseline. This southern elevation is designed to break up the wall facade the mix of pilasters, towers and variation in the wall height between the segments. The tower elements and variation in materials with span lattice and faux wood. The dominant feature along baseline road will be the residence and the office and the 50-foot landscape buffer, which will soften the appearance of initial study negative declaration for the project. The document was released for public comment and no comments were received. Project specific impact, no project specific acts were identified. However, the project is subject to Sierra specific plan mitigation measures as were identified in the study negative debt. As discussed in the staff report, the project is with the general plan, the Sierra Vista specific plan design guidance, and the project will not be detrimental to public health, safety or wealth. Staff ends that the planning commission adopt the baseline negative ration, adopt the required findings of fact, approve the conditional use permit and design review permit with condition three as provided in the memorandum. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Charity. These online meetings and technology. So I will now fellow commissioners, if there are any questions for Charity or for staff roll call. Commissioner Caparoso, any questions?
No, thank you.
Commissioner La Brea, any questions?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Pryor, any question? Commissioner Pryor may be on mute. There we go.
Thank you. You're on mute. On at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Craftka, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner, any questions?
I do, just one Charity, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate the conversation we had earlier. The four lane going into eventually a six lane. And then you've mentioned the 50-foot buffer for landscape. Will it be larger 50 feet when it's set as a four-lane and then it's go down to 50 feet or is it 50 feet at the four lane and be reduced below that? Do you have that? We didn't talk about that. I'm not you just kind of came up with a just a question for clarification.
I just want to repeat my understanding because is not wonderful right now and I don't know if I heard everything. Are you asking if the landscape you were when baseline to scenes?
Correct.
Right, I don't believe so, I think the landscape buffer will remain there.
That's correct.
I won't need to interject.
The auxiliary being installed along with the curb gutter and those are the ultimate, they're being installed at their ultimate when this does go to six lanes. I think, and I think odds on the, in the meeting as well, he might that that extra, those extra lanes will all be constructed south of baseline in the, in the county of the road because it's roadway, the joint city-county project. And so the northern, northern frontage improvements are at their ultimate location project.
Okay, that makes sense.
Unless I'm wrong, chime in.
No, that is correct. Along Sierra Vista, as those developers are developing, they are, they are putting northern improvements at their ultimate limits.
Perfect, thank you. No presentation.
Vice Chair Jensen, any questions?
Yeah, I did have a question for probably Matt Todd on this. The ingress and egress on in road. I agree with the restrictions to try and limit those left turns. But, but I do have a radiant, kind of an island in the middle of baseline road. Very development and people are not expecting island in the middle of the road. And I did have a chance to talk with Matt and Mark Stout earlier today and we talked about them looking at maybe an option to putting a mother at the driveway entrance to limit those movements sticking an island out in the middle of baseline road that could be a hazard. I was interested to hear back from Matt if they look at that, is that something feasible that maybe they should consider?
I, yes, Jensen, we did review the possibility pork chop type median to right turns out of the driveway and seeing the median out in the middle of baseline. And with the relaying there, it gives us the perfect amount to place the pork chop inside the and, and it would, what that pork chop is kind of act like the free rights that you see around town. In particular, around the mall and force the to make that right turn and prevent those lefts out. So it would accomplish the same thing that the median in the center accomplish.
Thank you, that was my only question. That's something the commission can discuss after we hear
Great, and that was other questions, that was a concern or a thought that I had as well, just having baseline a number of times and, and so would be worth a question when appropriate. I will now open the I would like to invite the representative for this item to address. Have that queued up?
Yeah, Chair Bashirz, I have Dave Stark on the representing the applicant. Dave, you may address the
Okay, yeah, I I can hardly hear anything that was going on. For the self-storage project?
Oh, yes, yes. This is the, this is your project.
Got it, got it. I can hardly Sorry. Hey, I appreciate Charity and her team project. We accept all the conditions of approval, there was a few last minutes the last couple of days that I think were worked through in a a good way. For the project and for the city. And any questions I'm willing to answer.
Great, thank you much, Mr. Stark. I will now ask my fellow commissioners if if they have any questions for the applicant at this time.
I have a question, that's possible?
Sure, Commissioner Pryor.
Good evening.
Can you hear better now, Dave?
A little bit, yeah.
I have a question, it's more of an operational question about getting to the site. I know there will be an onsite manager. Other forms of security will be out of the site.
So yeah, that live-in manager, there'll be other employees. It's a reasonable-sized project, so there's probably a couple of other ways. And the, the next question was security.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. We'll have a gate that will be at night and secured in the morning and then it'll also closed during the day and when you punch key to punch your code number in, that would allow you in. It also goes into the computer system when you come in also door, you unlock your door. It will say when unlocked your door and when you lock your door so that people don't their units for hours on end. And cameras throughout the project. Data, the art. Security.
All right, thank you.
Any, any other questions for the applicant from this time? Okay. Then I will now open public comments. Public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. Under, you will have five minutes to address the commission on this item. Greg, do we have one from the public who'd like to address?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bashirz. We'll start the clock up. Anybody on the line at this moment, but we'll give them seconds to call in.
Sounds good.
Chair Bashirz, we don't have any, any public phone calls for this item.
Okay, thank you, Greg. I will now close public comments. And ask my fellow commissioners, are there any additional questions for the comments or discussion? Hey. Hearing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
Oh, excuse me, Chair. I would love to have a discussion regarding the term restrictions and the median along baseline. There's concern along the commission to modify that to put the pork driveway a raised feature in the middle of the road.
Yes, I thought you might. Any any additions from the, from the commissioners, fellow commissioners on Vice Chair Jensen's idea?
I for the pork chop, you know, people are gonna go and do a left turn possibly or maybe just they don't see it well enough either. But I think it is a better alternative than the center median. But with that porch up, should we maybe, should there be something that makes it more visible possibly? I don't know, I'm just offering, obviously, you know, engineers looked at this and a great alternative and a valid design option that Ron brought up. So I have no problem with that, I'm just wondering if it's only a six-inch curb, should there some sort of a bollard or something on top of it or just a bollard, but something that delineates drive portion just so that it's more spoken? I don't know. That's the only comment I have.
Yeah, sort of thing. Matt, can you talk to anything? Any example that have bollards, pylons, even I don't know, some sort of wrought iron? You have anything?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty standard for medians and, and these just to have bollards kind of at the ends to delineate the dimension to kind of help. And it's not like you're solid ball, it's, it's more like a cue marker. You would see in the road that kind of helps identify where it is, it's reflective, so we'll show of it and stuff like that. So those are pretty typical on the kind of median that's placed in the roadway.
And that would be the case if the
Correct.
Option at the egress.
Hey, hey, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but there will also be to the right to directing right out only.
to directing right out only signage at that driveway location?
There would be signage to to do that. You know, again, depending on where you're concerned, where the vehicles are coming from, that would be hit, that would be into or potentially, you know, running into the pork chop. But yeah, that we can definitely design to force people to make those right turns, like it's similar to our free rights that all over some of our major intersections. And it would it would do more to direct them, and then that would force them if they were going to make a left turn, it'd be more like an illegal unit in the middle of the road.
Chair, if I could, Matt, for one more clarification. Matt, can you talk a little bit about the height of those between the median and the pork chops? Are they similar in height and are they both vertical curbs? So very in their ability to divert traffic?
That is correct, yeah, they're usually about six to eight inches high. And yeah, vertical curves that will help deflect any traffic that happens to deflect my light with it.
And Matt, it it sounds like you're mentioning that the free rights that we have throughout throughout as an example, turning from what Pleasantville Parkway, that that's the kind of curb it be and delineation that we'd be looking at?
That is correct. It'll probably be on a smaller scale at this driveway, but yes.
Right. The curb height, conceptually.
That's correct.
Okay. Any any other comments from the with regard to the pork chop option?
Just state that I support the changing of that to move it to the drive rather than the median.
And I'd like to, if if that is the wish of the commission to to further modify the condition to implement the pork chop, we have we have worked on some alternative language that we can read into the record, if that's the way the motion goes.
Okay. Well, maybe now is inappropriate to, if anyone would like to make a motion.
Is this a motion for the project and for the turn?
Could could we? Could be both, right? A motion including the?
Yeah. Adopt the baseline storage initial negative declaration, adopt the three findings approved to use permit subject to five conditions of approval, adopt the findings of fact in the design and approve the design review permit subject to two conditions of approval as modified to allow for a pork chop median in the driveway of the median island in the traffic lane.
Well, we, before we do all that, we have to hear what the new language is going to be.
Okay.
Matt?
Oh.
Eric, I know someone has it.
Yeah, I can the the new condition. So would read, the driveway shall be a forty foot wide A seven driveway with a minimum thirty foot radius. Access limited to right turn ingress egress and left turn ingress only. In order to restrict left turn egress movements, a raised median pork chop to direct vehicles to a right turn only shall be designed to the SaaS faction of the city engineer constructed within the driveway. If developer wished turn egress movements from the site, a traffic signal would require section three point five point seven and exhibit K of the development agreement. The signal installation be the responsibility of the developer.
And and Matt, that's revised condition number twenty three.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Need to make the whole motion again, Michelle, or can I just say, well, revised condition twenty three?
You could do that.
Adopt recommend planning commission, planning divisions recommendation with revised can number twenty three.
Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, I'm sorry, was that Commissioner?
I did second it, I think somebody else did also.
Okay, well, Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Pryor has seconded it. It's a roll call.
Yes. Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Caparoso.
Yes.
Commissioner La Brea.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jensen.
Yes.
And Chair Bushiers.
The motion is approved, and there is a ten day appeal period for this item. Next on the agenda is point, is a request to consider the fourth addendum to the Sierra Vista specific plan E I R. Recommend the city council approve a general amendment, a specific plan amendment, amendment of your investments, LLC DA, and fourth amendment of the West Park Federico DA approve the tentative subdivision map, major grading plan, and design review for residential subdivision two five zero Vista Grande Boulevard for the record for P L two zero dash zero one nine. Kenny, may we please have your presentation?
Yes, good evening, Bushiers and commissioners. My name is Kenny Shallow, so I'm here tonight to present the J M C T M three project. The project site consists of approximately fifteen acres of undeveloped residential land in the west portion of the Sierra Vista specific plan, which is generally north Vista Grande Boulevard, west of Market Street, of San Ysid Boulevard. These subdivisions are currently under development to the east of the project area. The project includes several entitlements that will allow the enrollment of seventeen residential units. These include a general plan, specific plan amendment to transfer units among six parcels that were shown on the previous slide, and also a designation for parcel F D ten from low density to medium density residential, two development agreement amendments to reflect the land use to unit transfers, tentative subdivision maps to create new subdivisions on parcels F D eight, F D ten, F D twenty one, and F D twenty three, a major grading plan for F D ten, and lastly, residential subdivision. The general plan, specific plan amendment will transfer units from the large lot parcels listed in the table. Each of the parcels has a zoning designation of small lot residential with the development standards overlay, which will remain unchanged. As a result of the unit transfers and resulting density, the use for F D ten will be changed from L D R to M D R. However, the total units designated for the project area will remain the same. Determine the proposed land use amendment and unit transfers will have no impact on plan infrastructure, roadways, or other public facilities on what was anticipated for the The project also includes a minor revision to the Sierra specific plan to identify two new gated sections for parcels F D ten and F D twenty three. This brings some benefits to the city's public works department in terms of maintenance of infine量 lines, waves, and lighting. Consistent with the specific requirements, eating of these parcels will not preclude adequate through access for pedestrians, cyclists, or automobiles for key areas, which is the future middle school and park located to the east of F D ten Vista Park Drive and the open space parcel to the north of twenty three, which will have a pedestrian rail. This is based into public roadways, sidewalks, and planned bike lanes that will provide connections for surrounding uses. Some of these staff concludes the project conforms to the requirements of the division in the specific plan. The project includes the first amendment of the Moore Investments of the DA and the fourth amendment of the West Park Federico DA. The DAs will be amended to reflect the proposed land use change transfer. As requested by environmental utilities, West Park Federico DA will be amended to revise obligations relating construction of groundwater wells and recycle water facilities, and also minor changes to the language on the monitoring of water supply and conservation goals to be consistent with other DAs in the plan area. Upcoming four new subdivisions that will provide a total of six hundred and thirteen. At least two entrance points will be provided into each, and single family lots are oriented with frontage on the public streets. Subdivision layout and street design were reviewed by the city's engineering division and fire department staff to ensure there is adequate circulation and emergency response. Each subdivision is also consistent with the Paseo design guidelines and the walls and fence of the Sierra Vista specific plan. The project includes a request to refgrade parcel F D ten and to balance approximately sixty thousand cubic yards filled. Approximately sixteen thousand cubic yards of earth will be stocked temporarily on the future five and a half acre parcel D fifty two, that's to the northwest of the site. Has received approval of the required Army Corps of Engineers four oh four for the existing wetland areas, and the plan will not impede areas within open space. With the recommended conditions of approval, project will meet the requirements of the city's improvement standard ordinance and will be consistent with the master grading and drainage specific. A design for residential subdivision is requested for the M D R provisions. The development standards will be modified to allow for a smaller lot size and reduce setbacks similar to what's been approved for subdivision. These reduced setbacks will help to facilitate the unit. The project includes eleven plant types with a mix of one story, two story homes ranging in size from approximately one hundred to five hundred square feet. The units will be single family detached, front loaded product types with two car garages, and each will be offered in four architectural styles. And as intended modifications are anticipated to the proposed home designs, including replacing four of the plant types with plans in the style with the modern farmhouse style. So in anticipation of these, the project is conditioned to require the home builder to submit a modification prior to submittal of building. So in conclusion, staff finds that the use change and unit transfers are consistent with citywide. Overall, the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, community design guidelines, and the Sierra Vista plan. Also, the addendum to the specific plan E I R that was prepared for the project determine there were no new impacts from what the original E I R anticipated. At this time, staff recommends the plan should consider the addendum, recommend city council approve the general amendments, specific plan amendment, and development agreement, and adopt the required findings of fact, and approve the tentative subdivision map, major grading plan, and subject to the condition of approval. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Kenny. And I'll ask my fellow commissioners, by way of roll call, if there are any questions at this time. Commissioner La Brea, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Pryor, any question?
Questions at this time, and thank you, Kenny.
Any question?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Craftka, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Caparuso, any questions?
No questions, thanks, Kenny.
And Vice Chair Jensen, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Now, open the public hearing, and I would like to invite the representative for this item to address the commission. Greg, we have?
Yes, Chair Bushiers, I have Chad Roberts representing the applicant. Chad, you can address the commission.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission, applicants. I don't have anything to add to Kenny's report tonight. I do want to thank her staff for all the work they've been getting for you this evening. As always, if you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time, and respectfully request that you.
Great, thank you very much, Chad. Commissioners, any questions for the representative? Okay, then I will now open public comment. Public comment may be calling nine one six seven seven four five three. And as we will have five minutes to address the commission on this item. Greg, is there anyone in the public who would like to address the commission at this time?
We don't have any right now, but again, we'll give it thirty seconds for the time delay.
Okay.
Thank you. Chair Bushiers, that's been a little over thirty seconds, and we don't have anybody on the line for public comment on this item tonight.
Okay, thank you, Greg. I will now close public comments and ask if any of my fellow would have any additional questions, comments, or discussion at this time. Okay, hearing now, I will now, none, I will now close the public hearing, and ask if anyone would like to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion. Consider the fourth amendment to the Sierra Vista specific plan. They are recommend the city council approve the general plan amendment, the land use. Recommend the city council approve the specific plan to land use map. Recommend the city council approve the first amendment, the Moore Investments LLC Development. Recommend the city council approve the fourth amendment of the West Park Federico agreement. Adopt the three findings of fact and approve the tentative division map subject to the ninety nine conditions of approval. Adopt the three findings of fact and approve the the major grading plan subject to the nine conditions of approval, and adopt the fact of the design review for residential subdivision subject to twenty six conditions of approval.
Chair Bushiers, I do have one correction to the motion, it's the fourth. Sierra Vista specific plan E I R amendment.
Okay, I'd like to mark off with comments made for Michelle, please.
So, work, Michelle?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Martin has made the motion, and I believe that was Commissioner Jensen, or Vice Chair has seconded the motion. Lupe, may we?
Yes. Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
Craftka?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner La Brea?
Yes.
And Chair Bushiers?
Yes, the motion is approved. There is a ten day tentative vision map, the major grading plan, and design review for residential subdivision. Agenda, board member, commissioner, and staff reports. Item seven one is a request to discuss the start time of commission meeting. Greg, can you give us some background?
Sure. And if you recall at the last meeting, Commissioner Russo asked staff to adjournize this item. And many of you will remember that in twenty nineteen, or prior to twenty nineteen, the city council and all boards and commissions pretty much, except the design committee, at the city of Roseville, meetings at nine o'clock P M. In the in the spring, inner early spring of twenty nineteen, the city council changed their procedures to begin meeting at six o'clock, and all of the staff liaisons for all the various boards and commissions at the city were asked to hold their commissioners or boards to determine if what the prevailing thought was on moving all meetings back to six o'clock. And again, many of you, we adjourned this in May of twenty nineteen, and at the time there was, there was primarily ambivalence about the start time, but there was enough of a commissioners to keep keep the meeting at seven o'clock. So the report through through myself and the city clerk reported back to the council that they wanted to keep meeting at seven o'clock. Planning was the only commission that that voted to do that. So a few months later, I was directed to adjourn the item again and ask the commission to reconsider. And I believe we did, we did reconsider. And I believe we did, we, we did reconsider. We moved the meeting back to 6:00. We probably had it at 6:00 for three, four months. And I think there were, there were some concerns among commissioners that that wasn't providing enough time to prepare for any last-minute change and various issues. And so the commission again considered the time change and, and voted to request the city council allow the meeting to move back. That's kind of how we've landed on our 6:30 start time. We've had that ever since, probably since the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, meeting at 6:00. So that's the status. And really, you know, I can, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Caparuso, but that's just kind of the background for the commissioners that didn't do those, those deliberations and kind of that history in 2019 of how we ended up at 6:30.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. That was really well presented. Kind of my rationale behind some of the changes too, and sort of my thinking behind some of the question that I had during those discussions. Initially, we moved to 6:00. There were a number of commissioners who, myself, ended up being late to a number, simply to the meetings in time from Sacramento. In addition to that, a lot of, you know, we get a lot of last-minute bonding, which is frustrating to begin with. It makes it challenging when you're not able to get to the dais and kind of read in advance of the meeting. So I did really push for the 6:30 start time, and I enjoyed the 6:30 start time. I also, it provided additional opportunities for the public. I really think it's a challenge for the public to get to a meeting at 6:00 if they are working in Sacramento or further and have to commute home after a 5:00 kind of end of day. That being said, to agendize the discussion simply because none of us have, most of us have not been in office in Sacramento or commuting or otherwise sort of detained 7:00 at night or 6:30. And so I wanted to bring that back for discussion amongst the commissioners now to see if there was a desire to move it, the start time to 6:00 to align with the rest of the, the boards and commissions. Said, I don't know that I, I think if everything were to go completely normal as it were before, which I do not think that it will for quite some time, I would probably vote to 6:30 because I still do think the 6:30 start time in a previous life world is a better for public participation was for encouraging volunteer commissioners like ourselves to sit in these roles, have the ability to be serving on the mission meeting. So that's where I was at with everything. And to bring it back for discussion and really see the, the pleasure of the rest of the commissioners.
Any other comments from, from commissioners?
I have a quick comment to it. The one, the one fear that I, I would have is get up many times because I think it does confuse the public in the long. So I think if the time change is made, it should be made in the mindset that actually we will be going back, people will be going back into this full-time. So I would just caution that. With that said, actually, I've only got a couple of months left on the commission, so I'm going to abstain. And it won't really impact me that much and let the people who it would affect take a vote on it.
I would like to add that I, Craftka, that changing the time wouldn't be a good idea as changed before. Now that we've set up at 6:30, I think it is a good time for the public. It lets me work until 6:00, such as myself, to attend the meeting itself. I would happily stay at 6:30 if that's possible.
Other comments? Greg, I would just ask, one of the, one of the things that came up when we were considering earlier start times was the, for, you know, the public to attend meetings. Has there been pushback with the, with the council's time change from the public and their ability to, to get earlier meetings?
I haven't, I haven't received feedback from the city clerk's office that there's been any, any comments about the start time.
Okay.
So I don't, if there is, it must be, it's probably very minor.
Sure. And then I would also, I would say that, you know, do agree that it'll be probably sometime before we're completely back to normal. Actually, we, I am optimistic that we will. And I tend to agree that, you know, changing a time now, change it back when we're kind of, we'll see, could, could add to confusion. I feel like we kind of landed on the 6:30 as a bit of a compromise. My thought is, you know, 30 minutes, other than, you know, again, adding some confusion and logistics and things like that. So I'm comfortable with the, with the current start time personally. Any, any other comments from fellow commissioners on the item?
I wanted to both question for staff. With technology working for us the way it is now and the possibility of us back to normal, if, for example, there was commissioner was having a difficulty getting back from Sacramento for whatever reason, would that commissioner be able to participate through a video conference even if we're back to normal and the rest of the mission is in person at the meeting?
So Greg, if you, if I jumped in, because that's a Brown Act question?
Yes.
Currently, the Brown Act wouldn't allow that. The government did do an executive order and state urgency that has allowed this sort of, you know, virtual meeting. There has been, and also the Brown Act doesn't allow people to call in their public comments. Again, that's due to the executive order. There's some legislation, excuse me, that's pending that would make these modifications that have been allowed to the Brown Act permanent. And so I can't tell you what ultimately that bill will look like. It does sound like there is to allow at least public comments to be in future, whether or not they're going to allow commissioners to zoom in. And I don't even know from a technology perspective if six commissioners are in the, you know, the council chambers, how commissioners can zoom in or even call in and whether that, that would be allowed. But there is legislation pending that may address some of that.
My, my understanding in the past is that if a commissioner, if a council member, commissioner, or whatever, for the Brown Act purposes, did want to phone in, wherever they were phoning in had to be a publicly accessible and it had to be agendized. That location had to be on the posted agenda 70 hours before the hearing.
And you had to, you had to your home or your hotel room, and you had to let the public come in. And, and so it is something that as a practice, the City of Roseville just allow. I mean, I could count on one hand in 20 years how we allowed a council member to do that or even none of the commissioners. So it's very, very problematic. And then there was how could do that? You couldn't have a quorum at, at some other location. So you would have to do it from your car, that kind of thing, because you can't change your agenda and have people come into your car. So again, I don't know what that legislation is going to look like, but there's been a lot of favorable feedback, you know, given to the legislature. Hey, some of this technology has been really great, and people have been able to pay more in meetings because they've been able to phone in their comments, and they don't have to go and drive to the civic center and get time, and it's actually allowed for more participation. So I thought I'd throw that out, and I just wanted to remind Chair this had to be opened up for public comment once the commission is done discussing.
Thank you, Michelle. That's, that's next on, uh, next on the list here. But shit, the, the input in the yes, because this is an agenda item, I will now, oh, and I'll first ask if any of my fellow comments or questions.
I would want to thank you all for the clarification.
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Labrea. No, things from Loops, I suppose. I will now open public comments. Public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. And we will have five minutes to address the commission on this item. Greg, anyone from the public who would like to commission on this item?
Not at this time, but we'll give it about 30 seconds to see if anybody would like to call in. Chair, that's about 35 seconds, and we don't have any phone calls regarding this agenda item.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Michelle, typically, we've got a comment, close the public hearing. In this case?
It's not a public hearing item, a public comment item.
Okay. Script is I will now close hearing. Is that correct?
I, it should take
I'm closing them both.
Okay, there you go.
Would anyone like to motion?
Do we need a motion on this item if we keep, okay, yeah.
I think if you, if, if it's okay, Chair, I think there's consensus, unless my opinion here is that there's consensus that we should keep the 6:30 time that's, that's been adopted.
Yeah.
I don't think, I think unless you want to change any action at all.
Okay. Well, you know, and the question still stands. If there's not a motion, then I think
You don't need a motion if you're gonna, if everything's gonna be status quo, there's it was just a discussion item.
Right. So if nobody would like to make a motion, then it's for discussion, and it stays status quo.
Yeah, and I appreciate thoughts on it. And I honestly, one of the things we talked about earlier on during these discussions over the last two years too, has been, you know, commissioners' ability to attend. And Commissioner Pryor can't get here till 6:30, that's a bit of a no-brainer. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
The joy of commission meetings. Dog is done barking. Greg, any reports from staff at this time?
I, I do have a couple of things to bring up. I just sent an email earlier this evening, and Chair Caparuso notifying me of this because, to be honest with you, I've been checking it, and I hadn't seen anything. And the League of Cities must have just recently posted information pertaining to their planning and academy. So I forwarded you the link to the, to the webpage. It goes through the days. It's kind of an odd, it's a, it's a virtual conference, so it'll train as everything is these days. It's an odd of days. It's Thursday, March 25th and Friday, March 26th. The whole day on Thursday, the 25th, half a day, the morning of the 26th. And then it's next week on two days, March 31st. It's another all day on the Wednesday, and then half is Monday. It's, I think the registration is $250 to attend the conference for members of a planning commission or city staff. To be honest with you, we have money budgeted for training, so if any commissioner wants to, to do this, and if you, if you can't attend the whole conference and there's certain, certain workshops that you'd like to, or sessions that you'd like to us know and sign up, I'd be happy to help you register for that conference and attend the sessions that you want to. The, the first day to me is, is a really commission 101, and then session on affordable arena, and another session on seems to me that that's the, where I would sit the, the best day. But, but we're, you know, we're happy to help you register for that. And I will tell you that on the 23rd, the 20th, you will be hearing probably three items related to implementing our housing elements. So it's a, it's a good day. But again, go on the, the website. If anything, please let us know, and then Lupe and I will help you get registered. So I want to make sure you know that. The coming up, March 11th, we thought we have a few more items. We're down, we were down to one item, so it's meeting. We had an item fall off the agenda at the very last minute. And then we will be having a meeting on the, on March 25th again. And we do have a couple of ordinances. We're going to be ordinance for you for accessory dwelling units, density bonus. We're trying to keep up with state law that seems to be faster than we can change our ordinances. And then also effective design review standards, another requirement that we're going to need to implement to, to have a complaint. So you are going to have meetings, both both meeting dates in March. And that for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. I would say, having attended some sessions live in the for, you know, for the league trainings and coverage, I will actually be out of town. So having, I'll be out of town for, for those two weeks and, and unable to attend virtually, but I would encourage my fellow commissioners, if you have some time to at least attend some of those sessions, probably worthwhile. And any final questions or comments from the commission?
One comment. So I, I know we're getting to getting back to tier red with how would we be looking at possibly going back to in-person meetings?
I don't have a good answer for that, Commissioner. I know that the council, you know, they're, they are creating tier to allow limited public in their, in their meetings. So I think we'll have to get some direct from the city manager's office, or I, I will at least on, on whether cities, city boards and commissions are going to be encouraged to, to have those in-person meetings. It gets, just because of the, the number of commissioners and the number of staff, even put a, a bigger limit on the amount of public that could possibly attend. But, you know, I, I am, you know, we are monitoring that situation and paying attention to it, but we haven't been given any direct on that.
Something you wouldn't mind, you know, following up on?
Sure. I, I, as, as we're going along these I ask.
I'm sure, yeah, absolutely.
This is, this is on, yeah, this is, I know this, you know, I anticipate two, two Thursdays a month.
We've lived a while because we all understand, you know, what we're going through, but I think we're all.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we're allowed to, I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll make the provisions. I mean, I know it's still going to be difficult with seven of you, but up at the dais and going to share the staff table. But we'll, we can make it work as soon as, you know, I'm given the green light.
Greg, I have a question about the conference. I've virtually attended some of the conferences this year where they record the session and make that available to attend afterwards. And so that might be an option if the training is valuable, a commissioner can't make it, some of it, perhaps we could check with the league, have recordings available for to watch their own time.
Yeah, I, I haven't gone, I haven't looked through all the, the entire, all the different web pages, but although now I, now I am as you're asking me the question, and it says recordings of each session posted on the virtual conference access page.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, I just found out about it five minutes before I sent the email to you all.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Good question. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay. I think, I think I heard Vice Chair Jensen motion, and Commissioner Labrea has seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I sincerely look forward.